To a special meeting of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors this October 13, 2020. I would like to call and it is of course a virtual meeting pursuant to executive order in 29-20. I'd like to begin the meeting by asking you to join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And so, given that, I would ask the CIO if there are any modifications to the agenda.
Chair Fennel, there are no modifications to the agenda.
Thank you very much. As noted in the agenda, we have a time certain of 1:30 for a closed session. So I'll go to Council Billingsley to introduce us to the items we'll be discussing in closed session.
Thank you, Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session on three items. All three are public employee performance evaluations pursuant to government code 54957. The first is for the planning and building director, the second for the aviation director, and the third for the public defender.
Thank you, Council Billingsley. Ryan, I don't see any, but do you see any public comments raised? Is there any public comment on this item?
Chair Fennel, I do not see any public comment either.
Wow, thank you. Then in that case, we will now go into closed session. Council Billingsley, any idea of how long that might take us?
I believe the estimate was 45 minutes.
Forty-five minutes. Thank you. So we will be back here at 2:15 to take up the next item on the agenda. See you over in closed session. To Council Billingsley for a report out of closed session, please.
Thank you, Chair. There's no reportable actions on item C1, C2, and C3.
Thank you, Council Billingsley. And that will bring us to the next item on our agenda, which is from the county administrative office. I'll go to you, CIO Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. On September 29th, your board heard from the Human Resources Department on the ADP implementation project and the challenge with receiving the general ledger mapping document. In order to receive the general ledger mapping document, your board directed the county administrative officer to return with an item identifying resources that would be required to assist the auditor controller in completing the general ledger mapping document. First, I would like to share with your board, the auditor controller is able to complete the general ledger mapping document by October 30th in order to meet ADP's November 6 deadline. As discussions progressed with the ADP Executive Sponsorship Committee this week, it was determined that assistance from MGO, which is an accounting firm, for human resources for the payroll quarterlies and for the AC to assist with the 635 statements, which are federal and state lobbying reporting documents, would be helpful in order to meet the compressed deadline that is now before both the HR and AC teams. As the county has an existing contract with MGO, it does appear there are sufficient funds already budgeted to assist with these assignments. However, I may need to return to your board at a later date with a supplemental budget should this assistance exceed current budgeted amounts. Returning back to your board's direction to identify resources for the auditor controller, the auditor controller is requesting three permanent staff, an assistant auditor controller, a senior accountant auditor, and an executive secretary. If three permanent positions are a hardship for the board, the AC is willing to make do with an extra help executive secretary position for 960 hours in lieu of a permanent executive secretary. On page two of the staff report is a list of assignments the new permanent staff would be responsible for in the AC's office. Annual salary and benefit costs for the three new permanent positions range from a low of $259,844 to a little over $333,000. Should your board wish to approve this request, there is motion language on page three of the staff report. Also contained in today's staff report is a request for additional funds for human resources. Unfortunately, the ADP project has incurred additional costs. These additional costs are largely due to required support resources needed to ensure project progress and adherence to the revised and compressed implementation timeline. Additional costs include $50,000 in ADP implementation and advisory support and $35,000 for Affordable Care Act reporting. This is recommendation two in the staff report. This concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, CIO Nelson. Any questions from the board at this time? Supervisor Wilson?
So I'm just, I'm just trying to grasp here what we're, we think we can at least get the short-term project done or whatever we're getting to in terms of this cost allocation thing. With number two on the recommendations here, which is the transfer of contingencies, is that what we're talking about? To clarify?
Well, well, yes. So we believe we can have the GL mapping document, or the auditor controller believes she can have the GL mapping document done by October 30th. Again, mentioned in the staff report is assistance from MGO with the payroll quarterlies and the 635 statements. We think we have those funds already budgeted because there's an existing contract. And in addition, in recommendation two of the staff report, human resources needs $85,000 for ADP implementation and advisory support, and then Affordable Care Act reporting.
Okay. And then on the question of additional staff, I mean, I appreciate that we should have a conversation about, you know, those broader resources, but I, I'm wondering, there is, it seems like on that list, or maybe Karen can address this. As far as I, you know, we're, because we've been doing this classification updates, and in the department right now, there is no classification that requires a certified public accountant. So I'm kind of wondering, is that something that maybe we should consider for the future is that if we're looking at added positions that, that we make, that we at least have one position within the department that is a certified public accountant, or have that be a requirement for employment? And it just, and if so, coming back, if that's what we want to do, or, you know, in terms of, you know, if that's, seems reasonable, what would be the process to sort of get us there so that we could have a classification that would, that would do that? I guess I asked, the first question was to Karen. So, and then I then switched over to Amy, and I apologize for that.
So Ms. Paz Dominguez, welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for this meeting and for the question. It's a great question. I think CPAs should be everywhere, but if I'm being honest, the auditor controller department would need a certified government accountant. There isn't a CGA certification. There is a CGFM, and that one is more geared towards government accounting. Just recently, the AICPA, which is the association that puts together the CPA exam, opted to remove all government accounting questions from the CPA exam. Of course, accountants, you know, up in arms, how dare you take away government accounting? Everyone should have that if they're going to have a CPA, especially since they would be the ones auditing government entities. But it appears the AICPA is going further away from governmental accounting. So while I do think CPAs bring a wealth of knowledge, I don't, I no longer feel like that would be the end-all-be-all for an auditor controller department.
And, and just to, I mean, this is a bigger discussion, we can't like bet out today, but, you know, a requirement in that classification could be a CPA and experience in a governmental organization. All I'm asking is that, do you think it's functional to have that discussion with HR to update the classification where we could get somebody that has the, kind of the prerequisites that you're looking for?
Yeah, I would, I would say I would be very supportive of that. I know that CAFs and associates was hired to do a study of our department, and their draft results were that we would have a supervising accountant. They didn't specifically mention a CPA, but I would be supportive of that being included in job classifications.
Okay. That's what I have for questions for now.
And did you have any question? It seemed you had a two-part question. Was there something that you needed to hear from Director Lee on?
Yeah, so it was really just a question of the process of, you know, of looking at a classification change that might address this. And so this is, that's for like Amy and Linda. Does this even sound like a reasonable path to get to that space? And if so, do you guys, what would you, what do you think that might look like, I guess?
Well, thank you, Chair and honorable board members. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. So the question in general regarding job classifications, it's something that we do in HR. We look at every single positions where there's vacancies and it's a critical positions in a department. Naturally, we would like to review the classification, discuss the specifics, the knowledge, the skills, the debilities, and whether we need to amend the job specifics. And so that's what we call is classifications review. Specifically to the assistant auditor controller's positions or any positions in the auditor controller's office, we would have to review, look at the comparisons of the general job classifications of the surrounding agencies. What are the current requirements? And certainly, if we at the pleasure of your board would like to include those specific qualifications, then we would draft the language to your board, seek your board's approval. Once your board approved the job classifications, that would now be the footprint for us to move forward with the recruitment. So that's in general, the classifications requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Lee.
Those are.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Wilson. Any other questions from the board? Supervisor Madron?
Um, yeah, thank you, Estelle. So can you guys hear me good? I'm trying a new headphone here, new.
Yeah, it sounds great.
Much improved? Yeah, okay. No more, no more warbles, huh?
Yeah, that sounds great.
I know those were quite entertaining, but any rate, first of all, let me say thank you to Amy and Karen and Jeremy and Linda and all the other team who have been working so hard to try and pin down how we can get this stuff done timely and how we can clean up the deficiencies in audits from the past. So thank you, all of you. I know this has not been easy. I was very pleased to hear Amy start out her presentation by saying that the auditor controller, Karen Paz Dominguez, has confirmed that she's going to be able to complete this mapping document by the end of the month, which is fantastic. Thank you. Thank you so much for finding your way to that place and for everybody figuring out how to do that. And it sounds like the final result was to have M, what is it, MGO with an existing contract, provide supportive services for dealing with the payroll quarterlies, 635s, and other things. So wow, I'm ecstatic. Thank you all for, for working that out. I do appreciate the extra documents we received today. One of them was the staffing chart over the last 11 years. And noting in that, that it's been as high as 16.5 in 1819, just before Karen came on board. And I think that was partly, we hired additional staff there to help with transitions, et cetera. And it's been as low as 11 last year, 12 this year, a lot of 12s, and it was as high as 14.1 back in 2011. So pretty significant range. And I guess from my perspective, given the issues we have in our audits, all the work that Karen has pointed out to us that she is trying to get done, and all the various concerns folks have about getting payments timely made, reconciliations also occurring, et cetera. I would be very supportive of responding to Ms. Dominguez in regards to the staffing request. And if we did hire all three positions, we'd be at 15. We were hired just two years ago at 16 and a half. We've been lower, but I guess for me, I really want to double down on getting the staffing to the auditor controller that has been requested so we can resolve all these problems that have just been piling up and get, get our work done. It seems to me this is perhaps one of the most important things we could fund here in the, in the county is to making sure our books are in order and our clients are being paid properly and everything's all in the up and up. So I would very much support that, that request, and I'm so glad that we've come to a place where we're going to be able to timely get the document done. Thank you. Thank you so much. That makes our job a lot easier, I will say, although, you know, spending money is never easy, especially in this time of COVID and all the other things. But I do firmly believe that this would be money well spent. And if we don't do it, we're just going to keep having these things pile up. Let's get caught up. Let's get this stuff done. You know, we can reevaluate with the budgets next year, et cetera, but I would support moving forward with that.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. Supervisor Bone?
So I need, I need clarification. So we don't need an accountant at the auditor controller's office. Do we have a certified internal auditor over there? Do we have either of those positions filled? Because in the past, we've had as many as, a lot of the time, all the way back to Neil Prince, we've had two accountants on staff and Jaconi, and then they, they kind of rolled down. The other thing is, and just a clarification, we were as high as 16 and a half when we had payroll over there. We are at our highest total right now. So drop out payroll because payroll is not over there. So we are actually talking about increasing the staff 25% for one office, and it's been as low as nine, eight, 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 mainly eights, nines. And then 1819 went to 11, I think, when Karen Paz started and came and, you know, when she was the assistant for, and came to us after a couple of months. So I understand how important this is, and I, I think all our departments are really important, but I don't know if a 25% increase. So I'm seeing we're asking for a, let me check here what we're talking about. Because another assistant auditor, we would, we have three senior auditors, and we want to add one more. It just seems like a lot, and I don't know if this is because of COVID, because there's, everybody's working from home and there's nobody in the office, or there's one person in the office. I'm not sure. And I need, I need a generalization before I just say, yeah, let's spend $350,000 because, because I think almost every department can come back to us and says, I don't have enough people either. And it's going to be hard to say no when they can, and if you don't give it to me, I'm not going to give you the paperwork you need to get this done. I mean, it is a, all of a sudden now, there was no way we could do it. Now we'll have it in two weeks. So I'm, I'm just a little bit confused. I really appreciate the, the, the idea of Karen Paz Dominguez working so hard with our CIO staff to make this happen, but it's, I, I don't know, I might, I felt, felt like hostage almost. I guess maybe, maybe I took it wrong or something, but I'd love to have an explanation, explanation why we need a 25% increase in staffing. So unless my numbers are all wrong, because we're at 12, it says now, and that's the highest we've ever been in the last 10 years. X the four and four and a half through payroll.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Bone. I want to add in there that, as I read it in the staff report, and then I would ask you to respond. Ms. Dominguez about to supervise upon myself. It says that you would be able to deal with, with an extra help executive secretary position for 960 hours if the three additional personnel was a hardship for us at this time, specifically in these challenging budgetary times. So let me just ask you if you could give us some responses to Supervisor Bone first, and then your thoughts on that as well.
Thank you, Chair. So that, that was a lot of questions in one, and I hope that I can cover them all. I will say respectfully, I do think you took it the wrong way, Supervisor Bone. It was not my intention to hold anyone hostage. It was purely, if, I realize you all need help, and I want to help, but there's only so many hours in a day, and so something had to give. I requested resources so that nothing would have to give. What I've done now with, without additional resources is I have worked with the sponsorship committee and with the auditor controller department. And the only reason we're able to accomplish this on, by October 30th is because we're going to be taking several shortcuts, significant shortcuts. We're going to be impacting special districts first because it will be their object codes that will be converted. They will kind of just have to follow along. We're going to add specifically only the ADP codes just to make the GL mapping document work. But the work continues beyond October 30th. I still have 3,500 other object codes that will need to be reclassified and converted. This project is going to impact every single fund and account and agency within our county treasury. So it is important that I do, do it correctly and that I don't rush through it. I'm rushing through for the payroll because it is important and urgent. In my department, you, you're right, three people is 25% of my whole department. So you can imagine the struggle if one person is out sick or two people are out sick. And COVID has certainly impacted staff's availability. There's childcare to consider. And even though we may not all be in the office, we have actually increased our productivity. What's important to note is that departments all around us have grown exponentially while we have remained stagnant. One position, while in a week, you can approve 16 allocations at once for other departments. There's, it's not equitable in terms of what our department has received in terms of staffing. What is important to note is that our department is a central service department, which means every single department and special district and third-party agency that operates with the county relies on us. And we have had to take many shortcuts to just be able to pay bills. Special districts don't get much attention, and I'm sure you're aware of their frustration that they're not getting immediate responses or their bills aren't being paid immediately. We do try our best, but there's only so much we can do with the staff we have. And the reason why this is possible, you know, I heard you say, first you couldn't do it, now you can do it. Well, that's because I'm working 70 to 80 hours a week, Supervisor Bone. I work in the morning, in the evenings, on the weekends, on the holidays, holidays. And that's how I'm able to accomplish this. But is it sustainable? No. I have my own, you know, family and kids that I have to consider. My staff have their family and kids to consider. So this would be, while it does seem like a lot to increase our department by 25%, I really do believe that that's just to bring us up to speed with the rest of the county going on around us. If, and I prepared some documentation too for this meeting in case you'd were curious about what this project entails or how we're going to be able to accomplish it within two and a half weeks. If, if you're also curious about what tasks our department does and why we need 15 staff, we have also been working for several years now on our master task list for our department, and we've split out the different functions that we serve. We ran out of one-digit numbers, so we switched to the alphabet. And now we have A through R that are different functions that we serve. I would be more than happy to share any of this information with you. I would be happy to sit down with you and have a meeting so you can see how our department functions and just how much demand there is on our department. We really want to provide the service that is expected of us, and we're really just asking for your help so that we can do that.
And with regard to your, seeing your way to make you do at this particular point with an executive assistant extra help, can you address that, please?
Yes. So I, before I started with the county, I, there was an executive secretary or assistant, executive something, yeah, in the auditor controller department. And that position's been gone. So it's been challenging to just keep something as simple as checking emails. We have multiple inboxes. We have an inbox specifically for property tax items. That gets a lot of hits every day from taxpayers and special districts. We have county accounts receivable. That's where we get information about all the deposits and the cash flowing into the county. There's county auditor. That's where we get the status of my invoice, or how do I do this? Where do I go for this? We get hundreds of emails a day. We have county journals. That's where departments submit all their journal entries, hundreds of those a day. And what, the feedback that I've heard from departments and taxpayers and vendors is they're frustrated that they send an email and it might take longer than 24 hours to get a response. And sometimes we don't have capacity to monitor all of those inboxes and our own and the phone lines because we also have multiples of those. Where we participate in a phone tree with the treasurer, tax collector, the assessor, and the clerk recorder. That's the first stop for all taxpayers who have questions. The first button you push leads you to the auditor controller department. And so the volume of phone calls we get in comparison to the other departments on that phone tree are considerably higher. That's what the executive secretary position would be doing is monitoring all of those multiple inboxes, and we would be prioritizing customer service. Because something else that I need to acknowledge is we have not done the best job possible at providing excellent customer service. Sometimes we're getting into autopilot mode where there's 40 emails that need to be addressed. And so it's just standard template, "Good morning. Here's the answer. Thank you. Good morning. Here's the answer. Thank you." And what I'm getting from people is it, there's no sense of customer service or interpersonal relationship building. It seems very transactional and robotic. And sometimes we do get feedback that something came off as harsh, or not harsh, but short. We would love to spend the time to develop these personal relationships and give people more context beyond just, here's the answer to your question. So without the executive secretary, I mean, we'll do what we can, just like we have been. But if we're, if the county is really interested in investing in our department so that we can improve the services we provide to all departments, taxpayers, and special districts, this would be a very easy way to do it, I believe. And for funding, then, you know, there's the tax loss reserve fund that we manage that fund. We make sure that there's always that required 1% or 1 and a half percent left in there. That would be a good place to dig into. If not, you know, previously I've talked to your board about charging for our services, specifically special districts. What the feeling I got from the board is, no, don't do that. And so I didn't. But we've certainly struggled because we haven't done that.
Thank you, Ms. Paz Dominguez. Any other questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Madron and then Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I do appreciate Supervisor Bone pointing out that some of those numbers in regards to staffing had to do with payroll shifting out of, out of the department. So that, that, that's important to remember. Thank you for, for highlighting that. I guess what I'm seeing here is that with the numbers that we've had, be it 12, 13, whatever it might have been, we're falling behind on the workload. And as Karen has said, it's, it's, the work might be getting done, but it's getting done late. It's not done with the kinds of relationship building that we need as a county in relationship to all of our clients and all the accounts that we take care of. So I guess I still feel really strongly that, at least in the short term, it would be good to provide as much staffing as we feel that we can to this department so that we can clear up a lot of the backlog and get back on track with, I think, the way we would like it all to be operating and how we want our staff to be able to be, have some time with their family as well and things like that. So given the workload, given the backlog, I still think an argument could be made for this staffing in the short term, at the very, very least. You know, we could revisit this with the budget next year and the year after that, like we do with all departments. But I would still speak strongly for providing the staffing that's been requested so that we can pull out of the backlog and get caught up.
So I do have Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Bone, but John Bertolomio has his hand up, so I'm going to beg your indulgence and bring Mr. Bertolomio into the discussion. Welcome, John.
Good afternoon, Chair Fennel, fellow supervisors and staff. I just wanted to say that I am supportive of the Auditor Controller's Department getting these requested positions because the Auditor Controller is kind of the nexus of all the financial and record-keeping operations of the county. And when they are unable to keep up with the load, then it affects every single department in the county. And I know that Karen being focused on being cost-effective for the taxpayer when her department is keeping up with the workload and making all the reconciliation and keeping their records as they should be on a timely basis, then I believe that when positions are no longer needed, just as any competent department head will do, they will not fill positions as staff leave for other jobs or retirement, et cetera. So I am very comfortable and supportive that your board does authorize the positions for the Auditor Controller's Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Treasurer Task Collector Bertolomio. So now we have Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Bone, and Supervisor Bass.
Thank you. And so, I mean, I'm hearing some, you know, different viewpoints on this, but I am, I guess I have a concern that our classification is making a consummate to the goal of what we're trying to get to and not kind of shoehorn existing classifications to make kind of stuff work. And I do think it is pretty important that we, if we're going to create a position in the department that there be at least one person in there that really has that level of certification that we would expect, and I'm talking about staff at the staff level. You know, I think that it is pretty important, and I think in the past it was kind of just assumed that that would be there, and I'm feeling like it would be helpful if there was, you know, at least one of those positions had that. So for me, that's pretty important. And then with relationship to the executive secretary, again, in terms of the management, again, I would want to look at that classification. That doesn't mean in the short term looking at part-time or temporary staff to fill in, really the void of that information management that's really happening in that public, you know, interface that it seems like there's a need for that. I can be empathetic to that need. It's just that I would want to make sure that there's a strategy moving forward that we have a classification, again, that really, that's very specific to what it is that is needed in the current context. Because, and we've seen it even in within our own offices, I mean, technology's changing, the way we work changes and all that stuff, and when we look at our classifications, oftentimes the certifications, they're a bit outdated. So I'd want to make sure that for those two positions, that we really, that we take just a bit of time to have the Auditor Controller's Office work with HR to get to that place where those resources are definitive in that classification. So I'm not so sure what to do in the short run, I mean, other than in terms of the, what we're calling the executive secretary and the temporary position. Like I think that that would be something I think I'm willing to do today with the instruction that those other two positions be worked on and classification amendments come back. And I'm also, again, very supportive of number two in here, which is the transfer of the contingencies to support the resources required for the implementation, going back to why we're here, which is the project. And I completely get where Karen Pazimenges is coming from with relationship to, "Yeah, that's great, but what happens beyond that?" And I think let's start gearing up to that space. So that's kind of where I'm at in terms of this, of where we're at today. And I'm willing to adjust my, you know, position based on, you know, input from everybody else. But that's just where my thoughts are at.
Well, thank you for that Supervisor Wilson. I would underline that, that this agenda is specific to this project and that has not been identified as necessary for this project. I will go to Director Lee now, and then go to Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Bass. Director Lee.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I also would like to clarify that specifically to the California Government Code, certain elected positions must have possessed certain skills and certifications or educational requirements. So specifically to the Office of the Auditor Controllers in general, part of the classification review that should your board direct staff to conduct a classification specs review, I would also like to inform that the part of that assessment will also be looking at the California Government Code. Specifically, we are in the state of California, and specifically California has so many codes requirements for us. So to say that certain associations may take away certain government activities or requirements, I am not aware of that, but I just wanted to inform you that part of that assessment will also be looking at these specific California Government Code associated with the functions and the tasks and responsibilities of the Auditor Controller's Office in general, so that you have a very comprehensive overview of what are the specific requirements. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Lee. Sorry Supervisor Wilson, unless that's in response to Director Lee, I'd like to go on to...
It is a clarifying question for Director Lee. So those are minimum requirements? Is that what I'm getting? And also to kind of understand in terms of the framework of the Auditor Controller's Office, just like so many other places, it's like, the person who's at the top isn't necessarily the person that has to do the day-to-day crunching of all the stuff because they're directing, you know, that's what they do. It's just, it's... And so in recognition that there may be some technical levels that would be really helpful in that, you know, to have as a resource within the office, that's kind of what I'm driving at, is to make sure that those resources are available. And so when you were saying that there's requirements at the state level, are those minimum requirements that we either cannot go above or below? Or what's the, where are you going with that?
I would have to do some additional research, but I just wanted to ensure that certain positions appointed, I'm sorry, elected positions will require by code to have certain qualifications in the areas of, you know, specifically numbers of years in certain roles, educations, requirements, certifications. And in my experience, certain organizations will want, because government accounting is very complex in itself. And so you want to bring in someone who has that matriculation to be able to understand and to be involved in understanding the technical aspects of the positions and ultimately have that depth and that knowledge. And eventually, if that person is qualified, could be the next leadership positions. But we would need to make sure that we, I as your HR director, when I conduct a classification review, I would like to make sure that we will be also looking at codes, California codes specifically, so that to have the data so that your board can make informed decision.
Through the chair, if I may, that's what I expect. So I think that's what I think you would do. And I think that doing that with, in concert with the Auditor Controller would be great. And so that's, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Bone, Supervisor Bass, and then Ms. Pazimenges. That's her hand up too. Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, I just, feeling hostage is how I felt. I don't know. I'm not saying that, sorry. But I go back and look at the end of 2018, we had, it was a nine-member staff. And now we have a 12-member staff. So we've already raised it 33%. And then two years later, we're going to ask for another 25%. And I'm just, I'm just doing simple. Now we're adding three more. And if we don't do this, then, and we haven't had an executive secretary since 2014. And it's, you know, we have, it just seems, it seems like if one of these was an accountant or at least a certified internal auditor, which are two positions, I think that that department would relish off of, and I think Karen Pazimenges could do a lot with, you know, directing them to get things done. But there's been such a turnover in that office. I mean, I don't know how many people have gone in and out. There's been some retirements, some transfers, but there's been some people, quite, I think, I don't know, it seems like a lot of people have gone in and out of that office. And I know we just hired three more. I think you sent out an email talking about the three new people. And then, and then three more. And those were backfilling people that had left to go elsewhere, I guess. It just seems like a lot of people at once, and as we sit here and tell other departments, you know, we've got a road department that used to have 140 people in it, now has 60-some-odd. And you think you have a backlog. I don't know where you drive to go to home, but I mean, they've got a backlog. It's going to be hard to look at other department heads, especially other elected department heads who got elected, knowing full well what they were getting into. You even had the advantage of being there for a few months before. And I think got somebody added to your thing. So I just, it's going to be hard to look at these other people and just say, "Well, it seemed more important that we gave them people when, because they said they needed it." And in the past, I mean, we've had a high as, I mean, far back as 2016, they had eight people in that office. So now we're going to have 15. So now you're almost doubling the size of the office in five years, four and a half years. So, I mean, and I don't know how much work, more work there is. And if there is a little bit of work we've got to get done, I see what Supervisor Wilson's saying, is bring in some people to help you get it done. But, I mean, I think Supervisor Jones said, "Bring on the people, and then in a year or two, if we don't need them, we'll get rid of them or we'll move them around." And it's a little harder to do, I think. I've never seen us do it. So it just seems like in five years, we're going to double this, almost double the size of that office. And I just, and I don't know if the work has gone up that much. And if it has, I apologize. I'm, you know, I'm not an auditor or a CPA, but... So it just seems like a lot to be able to look at other department heads and say, "Yeah, but they needed it. You don't need it." I don't know. It's just, it's a compelling argument that I've heard. And all the numbers are pretty amazing and everything and stuff, and you're getting more done. I appreciate that. But it's just really hard for me to swallow that. And then, you know, we've got, we could, everybody could use, CAO's office, everybody could use a few more people. But the other thing is, is we don't know where we're going to be, and we've been saying this all along. We don't know where we're going to be in six months. We don't know where we're going to be financially in a year. But we can up a department 25% till we get there? We may not have any money to pay bills, so your job will get really easy. So, thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Bones, Supervisor Bass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think actually Supervisor Wilson kind of hit on the questions that I had, you know. I do think getting something in the short term definitely makes sense. I think to do something on the longer term, we need to be thoughtful, not just walk in and say... I think it takes some more look, look and see. So Supervisor Wilson talked about, and what was confirmed by Director Lee, you know, I think he covered that pretty much. But I did have a question that I don't, it doesn't necessarily fit here, but it does. Now, we're talking about services and, you know, the public is, you know, certainly oftentimes during COVID feeling like they can't reach people. And I have been asked, "When do you think the Auditor's Office may be open again for more of a public interface?" And so I don't know if the Auditor Controller has an idea about that yet, but I just thought I'd throw it out there because that is part of the service to the community too, that I know people are missing. And I know it's hard when we're all stretched thin.
Thank you Supervisor Bass. It works out well. A couple of questions for you there, Ms. Pazimenges.
Thank you, Chair. Supervisor Bone, I'm listening to you and I've heard what you've said. And I've also heard you say in 2008, you just had whatever, you brought up the past. I will ask you, maybe you don't have to answer, but were you satisfied with that level of service? Because it is my recollection that you were not, and that you expressed that you were not satisfied with the work our department was doing or with the timeliness of us completing tasks. That has been something you have expressed in these meetings to me personally. And what I'm trying to point out is that the way to fix that is not by having the few of us work more hours, but to make it so that we can continue working in a sustainable manner to improve these services.
If that's directed at me, I thank you. But what I'm asking is, previous to the last two years, I can tell you I have spent 10 times more hours on the Auditor's Controller Office in the last two years than I did the previous six. And there were issues both, but we didn't have the findings we had. We didn't have everything else. And I was able to pick up a check if somebody was, you know, needed it right away to pay their bills, a vendor. We work for our vendors, not our friends, our vendors that do business with us. In a small county, a lot of the people we do business with happen to be our friends. And I'll wear that. I appreciate that. But what I'm saying is, how did we get it done up until the previous, you know, the previous eight years, take out the front two here, the six years before that, six and a half years that I'm familiar with? And all of a sudden now we're shorthanded and we can't do it, and we've actually increased staffing? That's, and I know there's codes and there's everything and different boxes we have to put in. But what has changed since you got elected, and you got elected knowing what you were coming into? What has changed? If that's the question?
Okay. So I heard you ask, "How were we able to get it done before and why can't we do it now?" The answer is, we weren't getting it done before. That's why we had findings every year in our audit report. That's why this county is currently designated as a high-risk county. It's because we did not have capacity to address all of the items in our findings. What has, yeah, high five. What has happened now is CARES funding. I've just got a request to issue about 400 or maybe more than that payments to the vendors, to businesses who have qualified for that $500 payment. That's happening. Roll corrections. Those are coming 2,000, 3,000 a year of people's property values who were reassessed, either through transfers of property or with the Assessment Appeals Board. The volume of work keeps growing for our department. And I hear you keep saying 25%, 25%. 25% is different for all departments. For me, it's three staff. For the bigger departments, 25% is a fraction of an FTE. So I do think it's a little bit unfair to compare my 12-person department with a department, you know, such as DHHS with over 1,000 employees, or the sheriffs with over 300, or district attorney with however many they have. It's very different. It's apples to oranges. So I don't really think that's an equitable or fair comparison. I would like to say that, you know, I've heard your board talk more about, "Well, for this project, we don't need the long-term staff." And I would like to pose for you that you're, me taking this on, I couldn't just take it on and stop at October 30th. I need to continue the work to finish this, to do it properly so that the county's books don't end up in disarray with things being coded here and things being coded there. So I think it is related to this specific project now. Now that you've had me start it, I need help to finish it because I can't just leave it half, not even halfway done, like a quarter of the way done. And I see hands, and I don't, I'll be quiet until the chair tells me.
Okay, no, thank you, Ms. Pazimenges. Just to remind you, just very quickly... Uh, okay. No, thank you, Ms. Paz Dominguez. Just just to remind you, just very quickly, um Supervisor Bass also asked about. When the um office would be open to the public again.
Uh, thank you Chair. So I I'm surprised to hear that people have been reaching out to you Supervisor Bass about our office because to date, we have received zero. Request for any in person visits. Uh, prior to the pandemic, I mean, the public doesn't. Come to the courthouse specifically for the auditor controller department. Up until like a year ago, people didn't even know what we were, what we did, or what I was running for. Um, so we have invited people to call us by phone, to do email, to do Zoom. And I've also said, if you want to meet with me, I will go to the office and I'll set up a time and I will meet with you. Um, the reason why I can't just say the office is wide open now, several reasons. One, the office wasn't really a safe place before the pandemic. There's monuments that stick out from the floor across our walkways. There's exposed cable wires that come out of the wall and the floor. There's asbestos. We've been told. Be careful with the walls. There's asbestos there. Uh, the air control is not controlled by us, so it can go from freezing temperatures to burning temperatures. I believe the year before I started, OSHA was called and had to come and read adjusted temperature. Uh, that's and then there's black things that fall from the vents and facilities has been very helpful in cleaning the filters. Uh, and they kind of joke like, oh, it's just a little bit. It's just a little black. Uh, I don't know how comfortable I am breathing. All the kids have are have been let loose. My apologies. Um, the now we have a lot of staff who have kids. Me included. And they are on modified schedules to accommodate for homeschooling and distance learning. So I couldn't just say the office is wide open when really staff need to have that flexibility so that they can handle the things at home. And perform the job that they've been hired to do. Uh, working outside of the office has not proven to be harmful for us. It's actually improved our efficiency. We're no longer delayed by emails and emails trying to resolve something when a quick Zoom meeting clears it up. Thank you. Uh, um, sorry, got distracted. Anyway, if 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 there is a concerted effort or people are really wanting the office to be open. I just needed to know that. And I hadn't heard from anybody that they wanted to do that. And if I need to go to the office and set up office hours. I will do that. But I also don't want to force my staff to. Figure something out in the middle of a pandemic with their childcare needs. And I also don't want to have them be susceptible because we are all some version of, you know, health risks that would. I don't know. And we we just don't want to get COVID. How about that? Like, none of us want to get it and our aversion to risk is only because. It's a pretty significant risk that we can't control. But if I am needed to go to the office, I would be willing to do that.
Thank you Supervisor English. Um, Supervisor Neilson, yes.
Yeah, I just want to. So, okay, or I'll let Supervisor Supervisor, um, if the CIO wants to go first, then I just had one last comment on the COVID piece. Well, I. Through through the chair, I just want to make sure that we're staying on topic here. Yeah, this is about um, resources for HR and the AC regard. So we can implement ADP. And so I just want to be careful that we're not getting too um off topic. And so possibly your board could would consider a motion. Um, as to what resources you would like to allocate um to the AC.
Thank you. Um, uh, CEO Nielsen, back to you Supervisor Bass and then Supervisor Wilson.
And I think I just, um, I guess when we're speaking resources, it sounds like um, part of the concerns could be that they're, you know, stretched. Thin because there's a lot of people trying to do multiple efforts of working from home and and taking care of children and totally understandable. But yeah, we can have a conversation on that piece later another time.
Thank you Supervisor Bass Supervisor Wilson. Mike, you're you turn your mic on, Mike.
Mike, Mike, Mike. Okay, so um, if if I may, I'm gonna try and just jump in with a motion to kind of formulate something to get. To the other side of this conversation. And so that motion is to uh, first do the second thing on this list. Well, first is to receive the staff report and on the resource allocation. Uh, for the human resources department and uh, the auditor controllers office to support payroll transition to ADP, which is what we're really supposed to be. Doing today. I think that's reasonable. Second is to transfer from contingencies. Uh, in the amount of eighty five thousand dollars of supplemental budget, eleven hundred uh, one thirty human resources for support resources required for ADP implementation. And then I I I do, I mean, that's really just getting to the ADP par this and I'm in and. Uh, what I do want to do is I won't uh, I want to add into that. Some allocation related to um, uh, a. What do we call it? It's not part time. It's um, temporary position. Temporary extra help for for executive secretary. I and I I'm going to put out there that it's a half time position to start. Uh, that's what I think it needs, we need to go. And then also, so that's kind of one, two, three. And four is giving direction to the HR uh, department to work with the auditor controller. To review classification requirements for the two for two of the three positions requested. Um, uh, so that we can narrow in on what those things are with with the intention of bringing those back to our board. Uh, for discussion as an actual item for long term support for the auditor controller's office. And that's. What I have and I and I will ask for clarification from Amy with relationship to the um, executive secretary position.
So um, uh, through the chair Supervisor Wilson, I I think what you are. Potentially asking for is an extra help executive secretary and I I've been doing some math on the side here. And I do think that that's about forty four thousand, um, six hundred and forty four dollars for um, the remainder of this fiscal year. I have that as a. A full time, um, forty hour a week um, position. And so your board could allocate thirty seven thousand, six hundred and thirty one dollars to the salary and benefits line, you know, in budget unit one eleven. Five thousand, well, they don't receive health insurance, so hold on. It's thirty nine thousand, six forty four. Um, and then one thousand, two hundred and eighty three dollars to um, FICA and Medicare. And actually, they don't receive dental either unless you wanted to make this a permanent position.
Well, so I have a question for the auditor for Karen, which is in terms of a in a executive secretary position. Would part time till the end of the year suffice? Could you actually manage someone for full time to actually give them all of the task? Would you actually be able to fill the time, you know, because I it, you know, taking on new people always requires management and. Getting them all set up and making sure that they're, you know, that they are doing it. And then knowing that you're also at this position would be off site, right? So there is that part of that. How do you would how? How would you feel about that? And would that be helpful? And not in it and get in the way.
Yes, Ms. Paz Dominguez, yeah.
Thank you. Um, I so extra help and part time might mean different things. Do you mean part time, like twenty hours a week?
Yeah, well, I'm wondering if the if that would be enough.
Oh, gotcha.
An extra help that is part time, for instance, right? Versus extra help that's full time. So I just kind of wondering where you feel because. You know, I I've been an employer on multiple times and managing and then, you know, sometimes the job, if if you hire someone for, you know, forty hours and it's not that a forty hour job. And then also trying to manage that person and keeping them and their expectations and work. Sometimes it becomes more of a job to manage that than it is to, you know, not do it. Some and so I just was wondering if if you have a. Opinion on that. Do you have enough? Is there enough? Busy work, I guess. I'm not I'm I don't mean demean that work, but is there enough work to make that person? You know, full time and, you know, in it.
Yes, absolutely. Um, I I I don't know how to send you this document and maybe I'll.
You don't have to send me any documents. Don't send me any documents, please.
Yes, I could. I could very easily fill out forty hours a week. Yes, um, the, oh. Okay.
I would like to say is um, having read the 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 staff report, Ms. Paz Dominguez referenced the fact that. What needs to be done right now for the transfer to ADP is is only going to partially deal with the general ledger or the allocation. Because there are other areas that will have to be followed up on. And I'm I'm thinking. Um, is that, I mean, I'm 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 hoping that that can be done between January and June. Would that be fair to say?
Uh, do you mean after the eight after the G O mapping document?
With, yeah, once we've done the ADP part, yeah.
Yeah, so uh, the chart of accounts could be completed if that's primarily what I work on. Uh, the staff report you have with all those bullet points, those are just my tasks. So those are things that I would be, you know, kind of backburnering or, you know, putting on someone else's plate. Um, I I do appreciate that Supervisor Wilson has brought up the qualification aspect of this. Um, you know, we. We do focus a lot on training as much as we can. And so what we lack in, you know, as a department, what we lack in. Licenses or in masters or in multiple degrees, we are keeping up with current laws and current changes. Um, so to answer your question specifically, could it be done by June? Yes. If I devoted the majority of my time to the project.
Thank you. Um, Supervisor Wilson.
So I let me just clarify the motion, if I may. So it was basically recommendations one and two. Um, in the staff report with also uh, a um, till to the end of the year. Um, a temporary position for executive secretary and to direct um, the HR department to work with. Uh, uh, the AC's office on, you know, coming up with, uh, you know, just updated um, classifications for two of those positions. For us to discuss uh, before the end of the year, hopefully, uh, in terms of how we might move forward with that. And so that's that's my motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion before I go to public comment? Uh, Supervisor Madron.
I just want to be sure that we're actually approving the staffing that is necessary. To accomplish the task by the end of the month, by the end of the year, as well as all of the things in the reconciliations. And that long list of things that Karen had there, uh, you know, ideally, we'd be getting all this work done by next July one. You know, by the end of the the fiscal year. And what I heard in your motion was having the HR director and the AC. Uh, director uh, come together and work out the classifications. For those jobs. But what I'm not hearing here is an approval. So what do you would you expect that there would be a? A future motion on a future agenda soon that would clarify those steps? I see Amy wanting to clarify.
And also through the chair, through the chair, if I may, you know, the the cost of those positions. Can be really dependent on the classification adjustments. So I want to make sure that that's what I'm saying. I I. It will be very diff. That's why I want to give direction to move in a direction, but I don't know if we're actually prepared to like. Throw out cost allocations for those without some. That's that's where I'm at.
Understood, thank you.
CEO Nielsen.
So I um, so I'd like to address some of what um Supervisor Wilson is talking about. I think part of the the. The motion may want to include human resources to review. Auditor controller classifications to include relevant licensure. Um, and government code and return with a long term support recommendation, which then gets us back to what Supervisor Madron was addressing that wanting to see. Um, a more long term solution. In addition, I think it would also be helpful if the motion talked about a transfer from contingencies in the amount of thirty nine thousand, six hundred and forty four dollars to supplement the budget. Um, of eleven hundred, one eleven for the auditor controller. Um, for fiscal year twenty twenty one in the salary and benefits line. I what I'm trying to do is prevent another agenda item coming to your board.
So uh, I I those details to the motion I accept. I'm assuming Ryan, you're there. Hey, there you are. He's like magic. So Ryan, did you get that down?
Yes Supervisor Wilson, I fully understand that.
Okay, so I'm asking the second or to.
Yes, perfectly fine.
CEO Nelson.
And may I make one other suggestion? On recommendation to um, the supplemental budget is to eleven hundred, one thirty, um, two one one eight professional services in the human in human resources. I I just, again, I just don't want to have to write another agenda item. If we can just take care of everything right here and now, I think that would be wonderful.
Sounds good. I appreciate that. Um, Ryan, did you get that? Okay.
Um, I have a quick question for the CIO. I know that you're doing a lot of uh. Calculus right there and on the fly. Um, any indication of where we are on contingencies at this point?
Um, if you give me a moment, I can get you that answer. I don't have um, uh, finance enterprise up, but I could pull that up and get you an answer.
That's great. Thank you. Um, so let's go to public comment at this point. I believe. We have. Two uh, hands up. Ryan and um, the first one is with the last four digits of their phone number ending in three, zero, five, three. Anyone who wants to speak with us on this agenda item, please press star nine. You'll be welcomed into the queue. And when it's your turn, you can press star six. Welcome caller with the three, zero, five, three as your last four.
Hello, Thomas Holder. I just want to clarify. You can hear me?
Uh, yes, Thomas, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I didn't hear all of the presentation, but I was just concerned in following along. I didn't know if we're actually in budget. Right now, or if we're talking about just supplying temporary staff for uh, to get a job done that. Possibly should have been done a long time ago. Um, I'm not in support of this three hundred and something thousand dollars that's proposed. I mean, it's a job that needs to be done over a couple of months. I mean, it's an elected position. I was following before um, the tax collector. I know when Missures was added to that office as well as uh, changing up the payment plan to be in arrears instead of upfront. They did that without extra staffing. They did the workload. I don't know what elected officials are supposed to work for hours or if they actually punch a clock or they just say that's how many hours I work. Um, I think this is something if we're going to relook at heads and do different things, but is this saving the taxpayers money or is this spending the taxpayers money? Because fixing some roads, it'd be nice to have that three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to fix some roads that don't turn into million multi million dollar things. I think this is an inappropriate way this conversation is going and just supply the resources to get the job done. And I kind of feel as an outsider looking in, it's very frustrating to hear for months and months and months, you can't get the job done. You can't get the job done. But then now all of a sudden, we can get the job done if you give me three hundred grand. So I mean. Or I mean, you're going to fund other departments. I did. It's a bad budget process, in my opinion. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. And um, we do have another caller. And that is the last four of three, four, four, three. Welcome.
Hello there. Um, my name's Jim Hussey. I am a senior accountant auditor at the auditor controllers. And I want to first off, thank everybody uh, for having this conversation. I think it's excellent. Um, and and I kind of want to build on what the Honorable Karen Paz Dominguez has had said earlier, where she was talking about the fact that. We are not caught up to the other departments. We're not asking for more staff. We're asking to get caught up because I caution you to um. When making this decision, to look at past staffing levels in our department, especially since you only went back to twenty eleven. Fact is, our staff levels have been hobbled ever since two thousand and seven, when the bottom fell out of the housing market. We've never recovered from that. And then it only went downhill from there. And so now what we're asking is to get back up to a level where we can be uh. Productive to the level that we need to be. I would uh, I would encourage you to utilize the excellent tool that you have in Ledger Star and go back. and go back and look at all of the other financial, every time that the Auditor Controller has presented the financials to your board, going back to the Honorable Joe Millet. Every single time when we, he, it would be presented, there would be a multitude of findings on the audit. And what he would do, you, every time, ask for more staff. We need more staff to be able to deal with these findings. And so that is, that's the crux of it. It's like, this isn't the first time we've asked. And we've been asking since as long as I've been here, which has been 12 years. Like, we need to get this staff back on track. And I also want to build on what the Honorable John Bartholomew said in that we are the hub of this county. And the, the previous public comment was talking about the roads. The roads aren't going to happen if we can't get the bills paid because we need to pay the contractors. And if we want to increase the number of projects we have, we need to have staff to be able to get these things processed. We have to put the cart before the horse here. We can, if we want county to run in an effective manner, we need to have a fully-staffed accounting office. Thank you for your time and have a great day. Bye.
Uh, thank you, Thomas. I think it was Thomas, yes. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Hussey. Jim? That's right. Sorry, getting you guys mixed up here. I think there may be another hand up, but maybe not. Ryan?
Chair Fennel, there, there's another caller, but there's no hand up. So if, if that caller would like to speak, it would be star nine on the keypad to raise the hand. Last four, the number is 3977.
Well, thank you. Welcome. If you, if you wish to speak, 3977, please press star nine. And you'll be welcomed into the queue.
So with no hand raised, I would say that concludes the public comment for this agenda item, Chair Fennel.
Thank you very much, Ryan. Appreciate your help on that. And I just appreciate the, the public comment. I will reflect that here we are again, 2008 was an issue. But I think 2020 is going to be problematic also budget-wise. So we need to, timing is a little strange there, to say the least. We're back to the board and Supervisor Wilson?
I just, I just kind of, I want to speak to this comparison that we're using in terms of size of department. And I'm not saying that what we're, you know, that what's been talked about isn't accurate per se. But I would say that the numbers of people in the department relative to this timeframe is one metric. And I think Jim, who just spoke, I think tangentially brings up a point, which is that, you know, another metric would be just the size of our budget as a county, right? Has changed. The size of, it's not just the number of employees throughout the county, but there could be other metrics that, that impact or inflect on this. And so I, I just, just pointing that out, it's, it's, it's not just a linear, it's not just a linear analysis. But with that, I still think we're going to be moving in the right direction with what is on the table at the moment in terms of getting done what needs to get done with ADP, but also kind of get, you know, getting our heads moving into the future in terms of capacity. And I, and, and not just numbers, humans, but technical capacity as well. So with that, I think, I think we've come to a place that I'm mostly satisfied with, but so.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson. Any further comment from the board? Supervisor Bone? Your mic, your mic, Rex.
He has not mine.
I like Supervisor Mike's approach to this is the numbers and stuff. But I, I noticed I went back and looked at the tax collector. And the tax collector over the last five years is actually down a position. And we've put a lot of burden on him as far as cash flow with our excise tax on cannabis, Measure S, and all those other taxes. And I know he has, has made it work. And with, and Mr. Hussey, I appreciate him talking about, but in 2007, the Auditor Controller's Office had 12 and a half people with payroll. And in 2008 and 2009, they went up to 14 and a half when everything went down, basically to probably help with everybody having so many issues. But I, I, I just want to make sure what we're stepping into, and I don't mean 25%, but it is 25% increase. So that's, that's where I was going. And I didn't know what we were going to get for that, except I was going to be happy people were getting paid. I, I guess I'm just as happy if they're not getting paid. I just get a lot more phone calls, as you well know. So, and I, I just think, you know, our staffing hasn't, I think, increased since 2008. I think we're down one here in the office. So I just, it, it's just a hard time to look everybody in the, in the face and, and do this kind of increase because I'm doing so much more work. And everybody has more employees and more duties and more ADA and more. I mean, you take a look at some of the stuff we've put on some of these people. I mean, our, our CIO's office with ADA and things like that. And, and the hours, I, I know the hours they work because I, I mean, and I, and I, I know you're working 70 and 80 and stuff like that. But I come in on the weekends and, and staff is in here on the other half of the building working on stuff. So I just, I think I like the idea of giving her, giving Ms. Paz some, some help to answer her, all her emails. And it always scares me when a staffer is answering your emails because they're addressed to you. And I don't know how they're going to figure out, how you're going to train them to think like you. But I, I, I think we could, I, I, I support that and then see where we're going. Or I know there's been the offer of MGO and outside help coming in and helping you get over the hump. And then you guys are back into free territory. And I kind of like that idea without putting permanent employees on, just because it sounds like we've got a little bump in the road. And we're doing quite an increase for that little bump in the road. We said somewhere in there, we still have to be fiscally responsible, whether it's 25% or three or whatever the case may be.
Thank you Supervisor Bone. Any further discussion here? Okay, Ryan, we'll go for a roll call vote and the motion on the floor.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. And, and my only clarification is this, the temporary position for the Executive Secretary, that's the extra help, that is, that is an extra help position, correct?
That is correct.
And, and that's the only position right now, right?
Correct. And that was till the end of the year.
Correct.
At 40 hours.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, there was just one moment in there where I spoke over Karen Paz Dominguez, you know, interrupted. And I want to just acknowledge that, no. I did that. I apologize. Just trying to keep it moving, so.
Thank you. Okay, are you all clear there, Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Chair Fennel. I'll go ahead and call the roll call vote if everyone's ready.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Sir.
And Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Thank you. Pass this five-o.
Thank you, everybody, for, for taking in this special meeting today. That is the end of our business. And I'll see you all again next week. Thank you very much. Bye.